Please stand up for the flag. After request, will remain standing for a long time from ancient please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty enough to support all. Thank you. Also like they think of the fact that we lost all the Congress, all the left, to be penalized this coming week. Yes, again, it's certainly an act of progress, but this is badly. Okay, good evening, three quarters. Tonight is public comment night. Please, if you would like to speak tonight, please go out your call and turn it into the village board so we can have you in line to speak. Madam Director.
Communications. Request approval of board trustees in this special meeting of May 29th, 2012, and meeting of June 4th, 2012.
Some more.
Second. All please.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
In favor.
Trustee White.
In favor.
Trustee Canaro.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Mayor Hartman.
In favor.
Request retroactive approval to make two bans promoting massive county job fair to be held on June 21st, 2012. Of course, in the streets of Grand Avenue and South Main Street, from June 13th through June 23rd, 2012, the county elected departments to be pending and removing the bans.
Some more. Second. All please.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
In favor.
Trustee White.
In favor.
Trustee Canaro.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Mayor Hartman.
In favor.
Request approval of block four permanent application submitted by Lady Montanato, 42 Conde Chablis, the block starting on Saturday, July 14th, 2012, no ready date, on College Court at Iloano Avenue, 2 P.M. and 8 P.M.
Some more. Second. All please.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
In favor.
Trustee White.
In favor.
Trustee Canaro.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Mayor Hartman.
In favor.
Request approval of a block four permanent application submitted by Pastor John Aiden on behalf of community church of Nan's Row 301, Atlantic Avenue. The block will be on Saturday, August 18th, 2012, Friday, Sunday, August 19th, 2012, 7:12 on Long Island Avenue, between Atlantic Avenue and Grace Street, between the hours of 4:00 P.M. and 10:00 P.M.
Some more. Second. All please.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
In favor.
Trustee White.
In favor.
Trustee Canaro.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Mayor Hartman.
In favor.
Request approval of the three ports of which third annuals, parks and communes, with barricades to be held at North East Park in conjunction with the Seymour Fourth Parade to be held on Saturday, June 13th, 2012. Request approval for the parade of public assembly permanent applications submitted by Teresa A. La on behalf of Seymour 401, 61 Way 200, and 12th Parade on the 30th, 2012, starting at Municipal Lot 4, Easton Broadway, continuing on Poston Street, Southwood House, and Easton Jackson West, and at North East Park.
Some more.
Second. All please.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
In favor.
Trustee White.
In favor.
Trustee Canaro.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Mayor Hartman.
In favor.
Request approval for parade of public assembly permanent applications submitted by Bishop Frankel White on behalf of the Seymour 4, 161, Lane New Avenue, 34 New York, 1520, for public assembly for a farmers market to be held on various Sundays, Saturdays, starting July 14th, 2012, until the 27th, 2012, except August 4th, 2012, between the hours of 9:00 A.M. to 5:00 P.M., the 34th Recreation Center Park in the north side. Pending submission, improper insurance, and approval to hang banners, promoting the farmers market at Iloano Avenue and Trans Street, back on Turnpike and Grand Avenue, Grand Avenue and Main Street, and South Main Street and Mill Road, with the electric department assistant hanging and removing banners.
Can I just ask a question of this council? In the backup, there was mentioned made that there was an issue with insurance from the village's risk manager. Is that been straightened out?
We're still waiting on the final front of this question. This would be approved, and it says pending submission of proper insurance.
So it still is not.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. It's called, uh, there's no compensation to the village? Is that what it is up there?
Uh, mostly for nonprofit, these things are acting as a subsidy.
Do we anticipate the cost of the village to be for the setup and cleanup and all that kind of stuff?
I don't know. Mr. Richard Sipper?
I'll need the mayor for. Uh, the cost basically would be just us providing the barricades out for that afternoon, whatever morning. And that could be put out the night before, and it'll be in the area of just some of those.
And this will be in the ballpark of, right?
Yes, sir. My components in my place.
On the barricade?
Yes, sir.
It's only taking up that area?
It's only taking up that area only. We just provide the barricades and the home to come in. We'll set them up in a different way than we would do for the festival. We put them on the corners, and they just put them loose, let them where they wanted to go.
And we'll be responsible for cleanup?
They're responsible for cleanup, and they're responsible for their own tables and chairs and everything else as such.
Okay, great.
Some more. Second. All please.
We have a question from an F. D. S.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have more of a comment than a question. I was working with the Seymour Corporation on this project as the chairman of the citizens, the chairperson, excuse me, of the Citizens Advisory Committee. This, I want to just to let the public know a little bit about it. It's a youth staff community farmers market, and the produce is obtained the same day, early in the morning, truck driver goes out to the east end of Long Island, brings the produce back. So it also accepts the New York State Farmers Market Nutrition Program checks, and also for the seniors. Those checks are in the amount of $23. And it provides, it's, it's, those checks can only be used at a farmers market. So people who are receiving those checks, primarily recipients that receive WIC checks, they have an outlet somewhere that's walkable nearby, that they can come and redeem those checks. We also would be accepting food stamps as well. Also, we would provide summer employment for a number of youth. I don't exactly know how many. I'm sure those that are following me can give you more details. But it will teach the kids merchandising, customer service, nutrition, how to eat healthy, entrepreneurial skills. So overall, I see it as a win-win. Anybody can buy produce at this market. It's not just for recipients of those checks. So those are my comments. I wanted to just enlighten the public as to what the farmers market is all about.
Thank you. Madam Director.
Deborah Lee Williams.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I have also a comment. It's just to tell you a little bit more about the farmers market. Uh, we will staff the farmers market with, um, 10 youths ages 10 through 14, and we'll give them jobs for the summer.
Hold the microphone, please, ma'am.
We will give them jobs for the summer, uh, which is a win for us in the community. Also, um, when you bring a farmers market into the community, it also brings in, um, more economic development because people, when they stop and they see the market, uh, they will also shop in the area. And also, with the fresh fruits and vegetables, you can't get that at the supermarket. You know, they come directly from the farm, and you don't have any, um, preservatives or anything like that. So we thought that the recreational center was the prime location for that. We have the, um, low income projects. We have the senior housing where they can almost walk there. We are right near the railroad station, and so I think it would be a win-win for everybody.
If you'd mind me asking a quick question. You guys, how else do you plan to advertise on this?
Uh, we are, um, we are going to create flyers. We've gotten a grant from Bethpage Credit. Uh, we're working with the three markets on Long Island, the three youth farming markets on Long Island. And so we're creating flyers, and we're going to distribute the flyers along without hanging up the banners. And we're going to have a, um, we're going to contact the media and let them know what we're doing. Of course, we try to get some free, uh, advertising out there so that when we kick off this event, you know, the community will know about us and the surrounding, here in 34, but in the surrounding areas also.
I hope we'll see you in July, July 11th. I hope we will see you in July 11th.
Yes, we look forward to seeing all of you.
Thank you. Madam Director.
Fred Rosen. Sorry. Steven Malone.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my general answer with this, the one problem I have is that this is 5:00 P.M. on every Saturday. There are many other functions that take place at the recreation center. And giving up, uh, parking for one specific program every Saturday kind of makes it a little difficult with respect to parking for programs that may be taking place during the course of the summer at the recreation center. Secondly, I have a problem with the fact that it is children as young as the age 10, uh, working young. What we have to do is look back to that tragic accident that happened at, um, Old Depot, when they had, uh, some things that happened in their parking lot. The car went out of control, and several people were hurt. Parking lots are not the right place for children, uh, to be employed, especially as young as the age of 10, which may or may not have some child labor issues.
I, I think, uh, this, though, we all know, we're talking about a, um, individual parking space, area, I should say, and that's a north parking lot where they're... First of all, there's not a lot of folks to park in that area. And second of all, it's separate from the other parking in the recreation center.
He's car got out of control on Merrick Road and right into this area. It is right adjacent to Merrick Road where there is a lot of traffic on Saturday and every Saturday during the course of the summer. It's not a wise area for this.
I see, ma'am.
Child labor issues.
The area we're talking about has a large space of land, including two apartments. So if there's a man that's going to go off the road, up the sidewalk, up the land, and then to, uh, people in that area, I think that, uh, that could happen anywhere, anytime, right?
You know, we hate to see a child in a parking lot, God forbid that should happen.
Oh, wait, you can see that. We can't predict such a thing.
No, we can, we can try and, uh, find a more appropriate area other than off one of the most deadly traffic roads, incorporating those freeways.
Oh, well, we can do two. We can park vehicles in that area right here before it, so that you'd have to take a vehicle and go over a vehicle and up the sidewalk and over the land and...
We'll take one of your two vehicles and put it there, okay, ma'am?
We can do that. Thank you, sir. We've got over 100 vehicles.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
In favor. It's always a business of having submission of property.
Trustee White.
In favor.
Trustee Canaro in favor. Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Mayor Hartman.
In favor.
Request to advertise the requested proposals for forensic audit, village free audit at another relative publication, general circulation on June 21st, 2012, with return dates on July 27th, 2012.
Okay, Madam Director, I'd like to record to show that this is the fourth time that the request has come from the mayor's office to the board of trustees requesting that we go out for a bid to see, uh, the scope and potential cost of having an audit done. It's imperative that residents understand how important it is to have an audit. Uh, we need to know where we've come from with our finances and where we're going. And for, um, the board of trustees to not understand that, I'm really disappointed that we have such a board that does not understand that. But how many people would I like to speak about that today?
On this side, we have three.
Well, hear from them.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the board of the village residents. I'd like to speak about the controls report we brought, which was dated September 11th, 2011. The village's trustees have fought every attempt by Mayor Hartman to conduct the forensic audit in connection with the New York State Controls Report issued in September of 2011. Notwithstanding allegations in the controls report that, one, from the fiscal year 2006-07 through 2009-10, the board's budget included non-existing, non-existent evidence totaling $4.9 million identified as a primary reserve transfer. This transfer was not recognized in any of the years that they were due. Since the village did not authorize the primary reserve, village officials did not explain why they scheduled a transfer from a reserve that did not exist. Two, the board illegally used bond proceeds for plaudits other than for the purpose the bonds were issued. Three, the village paid 83 professional service providers a total of $5.5 million dollars without soliciting competition. Four, of 12 bank bankruptcies that were reviewed, none had written evidence of an independent review, and four were not performed properly. Five, the village did not properly authorize the use of a facility signature as required of the village law, and the treasurer did not control the use of her own signature. Finally, the trustees refused to recognize the need for a forensic audit. With this exception, on May 7th, the forensic audit was put on the agenda, and trustee Kennedy made a motion. It was seconded by Carmen Canaro. Then one of the residents complained that there were some people that wanted to speak on it, and they weren't present, they left. So we probably go to the next meeting. On May 21st, trustee Kennedy did not show up. Carmen Canaro, trustee Canaro, she's remained silent. So again, it was postponed. Now, on the June 4th meeting, all the trustees were here. And again, when the agenda item was read, the mayor, I mean, the trustees again were silent like they were tonight. I would like to know why. Just to confirm, you stated that you vote for what's right for the people, and that you are not a spam, just...
Because, um, for something the trustees, whether or not they want to answer the public, uh, I will say again that it's imperative that we have this audit done. We need to know what's what, very simple. We're talking about millions and billions of dollars. And if we're going to give public officials the notion that we'll allow them to run our business in such a fashion, we're setting a horrible precedent as a community, especially in these economic times, or any times. I mean, we are supposed to lead the way. And if we're not correct here, how can we impose laws and rules and regulations on others if we're not doing the right thing from this day's? Again, for you, Ford, look at what we're getting.
Anthony Miller.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I was a little late.
Good evening.
I promise I won't take up too much of your time. I think I can. I just have a few quick questions about this. Uh, I try to stay along briefly. Question number one is, how many meetings are there held between the mayor and the board of trustees during the budget process? Number two is, what is the usual cost of sending out the requests and proposals? Because I would assume that you have to advertise them to local circulations. And, uh, number three. I actually think that's it for now.
Yes, sir.
How many meetings have we had? Aside from the workshop?
Aside from the workshops? I remember you said that we have the workshops. The board had the workshops that were level 11. So that's what, about three or four, I believe. As far as the cost, I don't, I don't think I'm going to have to discuss that with our purchase committee.
Okay. Am I still allowed to answer other questions until maybe it's time? Just trying to make sure I got it right. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. You probably just said it, but I was trying to take down some notes very quickly. Uh, what exactly are you looking to find through this forensic audit?
What we want to do is, we want to see, uh, exactly what it is that the state controllers are telling us to look at, that was done, um, improperly. Now, if you've got $5.5 million of wrongful billing, you might want to know who did it, why you did it, and if it's still going on. We have some bad practices. They've said that there were 19 of them. 19 practices that they did not feel were good practices for this municipality. So how can you correct them if you don't know all of what you've done? This is a new administration. I wasn't here when the majority of these things happened. I wanted to start with a clean slate. I wanted to do the right thing for taxpayers here in the village of Freeport. I can't do it if we're still doing some of the same things wrong we have been going on for whatever number of years. We need a professional to come in and tell us what we can do better, ensure that we're not wasting that kind of money or mismanaging or wrongfully moving it around. Whatever it is, we won't know that until a professional tells us exactly what is happening.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, the reason why I asked how many meetings there were leading up to, uh, the budget process, and I'm trying to find the easiest way possible to say this without offending anyone on the board. I've said it before, I attended the budget workshop, the public budget workshop, which was pretty much a full-time day with all of the trustees. Um, and every department head was here for that, even the village attorney, the clerk, and there were several other people there, but the one person that was absent was you. And I'm not pointing it out to start up any, any issue with you, Mr. Mayor, but I'm just pointing out, as a resident of the village, often we hear you chime the trustees for not moving on sending out the request for proposals. I read through the forensic, excuse me, the audit from the state controller myself, and we all know the background of our state controller. He is, as you would say, a financial guru. The man knows his numbers. And if you read through the, the state controller's report, he has detailed exactly what was done, what he disagreed with, at least his office and the state disagreed with. And they also told you how to correct it. I don't understand why you would need to spend the money for a forensic audit if it's already been pointed to you by the top auditor in the state of New York, as far as I can understand, the state controller. Right now, the request from you to me, just in my own thinking, it seems, I don't know, as a resident, to sit through a budget workshop with the trustees and to wash the shit off the dollars. For you to request this, it seems somewhat insincere to me because you weren't active in the process that led to the budget that you approved yourself. I mean, often you come out and complain about what was cut from the last budget. But if you had participated in those meetings and participated in the hearings, you would have had some input there, you know? So that, that's, that's...
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
You can go ahead.
Okay, first of all, the budget workshops for the trustees that they participated in, my branch of government, we develop the budget so that they'll have something to work with. They then take the budget, and they start finding ways in which they feel they want to cut it, which I can't stop them from doing anyway, and that's their opportunity to civil farm heads because the New York State law says that only the mayor runs the day-to-day operation of the village. So the trustees don't even have the authority to give orders to the department heads as to what they do during the day. It's not their responsibility from the legislative branch of government. It's the executive office that does that. So for me to sit with the trustees and the department heads, but they, this is one of the few times they have the ability to do that, does me no good because I've got to deal with what they give me anyway because that's the one function of government that they have. They believe they help create the budget. They help create the cuts. They're here to watch the money and sign off on checks. And all I'm saying to you is that we still do not know everything that's necessary to know from the past with the finances because we have not had a professional to tell us the state. Uh, controller does not go in deep as such. And they don't give us the people and the places and what they think. They don't do that. You have to hire your own professional auditor to come in for, to go in to tell you exactly how things have happened, where the urgent pain from. And from that perspective, and then, and then we have to, then we have what's necessary to give to the DA's office or the state attorney general's office to move on an investigation of wrongful billing to take aways. The, the state controller is not doing that. They're not going to do that. They're not going to sign off on something like that. They told us what we needed to do. We've yet to do that.
I just read through a report today in Newsday about the state controller coming down to look at the finances, I believe, in Long Beach, and that's pretty extensive the way that they wrote that one.
Thank you, sir. Someone watching you, correct? Yes, sir.
First, I would like to congratulate the trustees for having the fortitude to stand up to your brother the self-four times and not wasting the taxpayers' money, which could be as high as $1.30 so clear for an order. We have 12 independent audits from prior administration. We have the annual audits during your administration. We have the, uh, state controllers audit. And I don't believe any of those call for a forensic audit. They tell us what to do, as you said, and they did not say do a forensic audit. They told us what we have to do to correct whatever problems may or may not exist. We turn around and you make the argument that we need professionals to tell us what to do. I am of belief, and I hope that you are, that our treasurer, our controller, and our auditor are all professionals. And I take it... And I take it your comment to mean that you have serious questions as to their capabilities. I would like to remind you that you hired each one of them. I do believe that all three of them are professional and that they have professional staffs, and if you were to call upon them, this could be looked at in-house rather than having to spend a half million dollars to another firm to have, again, a fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth audit done. I believe that the village in-house has the necessary talent to do this, and once again, I would like to thank the trustees for, for the fourth time, doing what is right for the Village of Freeport rather than listening to the man at the center of the thanks. Thank you.
Just want to make a clear, Freeport, now, no, sir, I'm asking you. I just made that statement, that's you. Just want to make a clear, Freeport, that if you went to your medical doctor, for example, for a check, and your doctor told you that from the counts with your blood test and your analysis that he or she feels that maybe something wrong to kidney blood, bless you, he's not a kidney specialist and he needs you to see a specialist. We need a specialist to tell us what has happened. We got to know that if you got billions and billions upon billions of dollars that have been mismanaged, that it's not fair to the people at work here that just came in, they don't have the time to go back, whatever number of years, to look at someone else's work and trying to decide what happened. There are people in this world, it's like having a forensic study done on a worker. They specialize. And what I don't understand is that all we're talking about is an RFP. That means that to have some people tell us what it would cost, what they think based upon what we have to show them, it would cost us to have done and listen to their recommendations. That's all I ask for. We can't even get to first base with this. But again, this is up to the taxpayers. All I'm saying is, it's your money, we're talking about millions and billions of dollars, so that every time someone wants to move billions around and mismanage it, they don't feel that they got a license to do so because there's no repercussions for not pursuing the people's business in the proper manner. And this isn't going to go away, it can't, it's too much money. Madam Clerk?
Lieutenant Paul, request avatar and request qualification for one part of the consecutive agents in the leader, another relevant publication, general circulation on June twenty first, two thousand and twelve, and the deadline is July the second, two thousand and twelve.
So moved. Second, all please.
Deputy Maia Martinez.
In favor.
Trustee White.
In favor.
Trustee Piero.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Maia Audrey.
In favor.
Request for award bid, twelve dash five, ELC, dash two point five, continuous emissions monitoring system to the F box, environmental company, eight, four seventy-nine, Golden Turnpike, Wellington, Connecticut, zero six two seven nine, the lowest responsible bidder, meeting this specification, we have nineteen thousand two hundred dollars excluding emergency repairs over a two-year term commencing June thirteen, two thousand and twelve.
So moved. Second, all please.
We have a question for Mr. J.
Yes, Veronica Trustee, on two B, it seems that the cost for emissions monitoring keeps gradually increasing each year. Now, the village switched from diesel oil to burning natural gas to clean up the, the act of the atmosphere. And I can't see what the positive contribution an outside emissions monitoring system makes to Freeport. We're getting closer and closer to, what is it, let's see, nineteen thousand two hundred, certainly twenty thousand. And this environmental business has been proven over and over again to be almost a religion. There's no real scientific substance to the so-called pollution of the global warming. I have asthma, I want clean air more than the average person, but I see it's, the environment's being abused for certain parties to make money and inflate the cost of producing. So I feel we should take a second and third look at this continuous emissions monitoring system, and unless it's already imposed by the WHOA, I think we can live without it very well because natural gas is as clean and burning as you can get. Maybe someday they'll be able to use hydrogen, but it's, it's an expense, I think, that will keep growing, and I think we should avoid it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If I just might respond to that. Currently, the power plant is replacing the filters in the exhaust system and is required by law to test the output. If the ammonia displaced in the air meets a certain amount, they have to reduce the electrical output of the power plant, which would reduce the income for the electrical department. So this has to be done or they can't produce the electrical requirement that we're requested to do by the electric needs that we've been on, so it has to be tested.
And I think, I think what we have to understand is, whenever we're talking about environmental costs for studies or for oversight, it's because it's required by law, it's not that we have a choice with this, we don't. The law requires it, state law requires it, because if there is no oversight, then people will have the tendency to do things they shouldn't do to get by. So we've got to have these sorts of things in place to watch, to check, to be sure that we're not harming society, so.
Burning gas, it's natural gas.
Well, there's a lot going on there, Mr. J. You know, we still have some diesels down there, we still got a lot of things that we need to change out, because it's all about money as well, but we want to be on the safe side of whatever we're doing. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Deputy Maia Martinez.
In favor.
Trustee White.
In favor.
Trustee Piero.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Maia Audrey.
In favor.
Request authorization to retrofit funding here in the amount of twenty-four thousand six hundred and seventy dollars, twenty-nine cents of Nellie on the Rex Call, thirty-second minute, avenue point one four zero.
So moved.
Second, all please.
Deputy Maia Martinez.
In favor.
Trustee White.
In favor.
Trustee Piero.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Maia Audrey.
In favor.
Public Works, request avatar and notice this disposal of inorganic materials, two thousand and twelve, Melita, and other relevant publication, general circulation on June twenty-third, two thousand and twelve, with a return date of July tenth, two thousand and twelve.
So moved. Second, all please.
We have a question for Mr. J.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, number four. I think we should rethink this disposal of inorganic materials, in other words, garbage and trash disposal. The state of Denmark, they have villages and communities that are competing with one another, for who gets one of these sin fuel garbage disposal burning units? Because the different local governments are enjoying very low electricity and very modern garbage disposal. There are no smells, there are no unusual objections, they're actually competing for who can have the sin fuels plant placed in their area. It's no longer a sloppy smelling garbage dump. Modern science has improved the disposal of trash and garbage to the point where villagers like Freeport are soliciting their presence just to take care of a big public need, and at the same time, they're actually extracting heat for their homes throughout Denmark and maybe Netherlands, a couple of those low countries. So it's not going to make the Freeport the garbage capital of the world and so on. It's not really an emotional issue anymore. We've got to have science guide our decisions and our dispensing of investment. If somebody can check out this Denmark experiment, I think Freeport can reconsider even a drive of Metroparkway there by that sin fuels plant. When it first started out, you couldn't drive by without your eyes tearing, it was horrible. Now, it might as well be a perfume plant, no smells, no toxic anything, and the town of Hampstead seems to be the only government entity on Long Island that escapes this perpetually rising tax rate that's strangling our inhabitants, deterring commercial development. If we can get a sin fuels plant.
Thank you, sir.
We should drive it.
Thank you, Mr. J.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Deputy Maia Martinez.
In favor.
Trustee White.
In favor.
Trustee Piero.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Maia Audrey.
In favor.
Request authorization from the mayor to sign energy board necessary to submit a grant application to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for the urban community forestry progress. Would you require a fifty percent village match in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for the tree planting program for the North Main Street corridor? And upon approval, enter to execute the project agreement, please.
So moved. Second, all please.
We have a question for Mr. Miller.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, once again. Just a very quick question. I'm looking at this, I gotta say, the first time in my lifetime I was enjoying the ride up North Main Street without worrying about damaging anything on my vehicle because of the street being repaid. So I feel I need to thank our municipal legislators for making it possible for that road to be done. So I'm kind of curious now, as a, as an individual that served on the North Main Street Steering Committee after the revitalization program, to see something like this going on, I think it's actually excellent that we're looking to plant those trees on the street, that it would actually fit very well up there. But I'm kind of curious as to what we're doing as far as the project goes. Last I checked, I thought there was a vision for bricklayers that go into the streets and make the benches and traction circles. How can we possibly plant trees on that pavement if we don't get to work on the brick layers itself?
This particular grant won't materialize for at least another year until the next fiscal budget. Right now, we're just looking for the man to be able to have authority to sign off on any unnecessary paperwork that would have to be removed to plan forward. But right now, we're looking at any additional roadwork that would be taking place regarding bombouts or paving stones that would come from the mayor's efforts in the, the master plan that they're looking to do on the Main Street corridor to be brought to fruition, and this will be partly bought into it as well with the tree planting, nothing will be planted, first of all, until we actually get the grant, come with the funding and action, and in addition to that, nothing will move forward until that other issues regarding North Main Street will be addressed first.
Now, for part two of that question, Mr. Mayor, that was actually from you, where are you with the North Main Street project?
We're moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We still got courage that has to be done, and then as a thing about funding, your legislators can give all the credit to have to come back with more funding. So we're going to be meeting with them to get an update on exactly what funding they have available to move forward with the additional work that was signed.
They have to come back with more funding. What did it cost to repay the road?
I believe it was somewhere in the area of about six million dollars. There was infrastructure work that took place as well. And then there was an addition that one of the legislators wanted was to take it from, I guess that was Davis all the way to that one Turnpike, it was, and that sort of.
Okay, well, hopefully we can get to work on the, you said, the legislators, our legislators need to come back with more funding, I thought there was actually more in the, in the, for the entire work of the street.
No, I'd say what happened was, while work was taking so long, prices like Mr. J, it was about cost escalating and things changed.
Well, with the work going on in so many more communities in Mass, on Southern County, I should hope that we can actually get on the ball and spend more time actually having a discussion, not even so much a discussion, actually getting into work on the North Main Street project, because on that street, as you very well know, Mr. Mayor, there's, there's economic development opportunity. You know, there's opportunity for people to stay home, you know, move back to Freeport, and I think that's, it's funny, we've said, we've spoke so much about a forensic audit for past four weeks, but this is the first time we've heard anything about North Main Street this year, so.
I think maybe if you notice, there's plenty of signage up there on the CDA where we've touched quite a few businesses on North Main Street with revitalization leave facade. There's another project ongoing down the corner of Mount Joy and North Main Street, directly across the street from Beth and Church. And we just finished one that two long ago on the opposite side, Road Up, on the corner of Lena and off Link, and we persisted pushing all efforts for their roofs to finish their revitalization leave facade. So there's, there's a lot going on, and we also have two projects on Sunrise Highway going on at this time, one will be the state of the art test station, it's on the corner of South Ocean and Sunrise. There's adjacent to there, there's the shopping center, the IHOP shopping center, there's more economic development going on in that shopping center. We all know that Big Banana is open on Atlantic Avenue, the shopping center on Atlantic and South Main, just recently opened a few months ago. I understand that Taco Bell is coming to Freeport on Sunrise Highway as well. There, there are a number of projects going on, and as I keep saying, and maybe I'm not saying enough, we have more than forty new or expanded businesses in Freeport in the last three years. Freeport is moving forward quite well. When we look at many of the eyesores that Freeport has had for fifteen, twenty years, those eyesores have been taken away. If we could just get to work on that old bank building site that's been in litigation now for about six, seven, eight years, counsel? Roughly six years. Six years. Time equity is property, that, that has to move. That's a huge part of our economic development. The board has just agreed to push for the Sunrise Highway project down here, Marshall School moved forward tonight and met with those folks. So think of moving forward economic development. Do we have enough? Absolutely not. We need to revitalize our industrial park. We're looking at various areas as to how we can attack that and it's need to become a target for us. There are far too many, 14 empty commercial buildings in our industrial park. We've been told it's about 40% of the industrial park is empty. And we have one of the most exciting and most real tangibles that you could offer. And that's the electricity. The cost of the electricity is 52% lower than our closest competitor. That's huge. And so we're going to start working on it. There's so much positive that we can do top of economic development and job growth in the village that we really have to take, not just a look at, but really create a master plan to move forward. And that's what we should be doing.
Absolutely.
You know, but if you don't know how to safeguard money, it's hard to do anything else right. And it's going to keep going back because it's all about money and how we operate. And it's all about good or bad happens. It all works together.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll tell you, I'm a huge fan of the CDA. As I told you years before, you got here, I was always in the CDA office. God knows I miss Ellen Kelly, to sit back and speak to someone who actually was upper hand, actually making sure that vision was seen through. To think about industrial parks, Mayor, I think we really need to concentrate on Main Street right now. That's one project that we actually started from the ground up and worked our way through. The public was involved in that entire thing. So you've got your plan now, let's follow that through and actually get that done first and then think about industrial parks. Because if we can finish that, that'll be the first step to a better Freeport. If we can finish that and show Nassau County, the town of Hempstead, and even the state of New York that, wow, this is what Freeport did with what was a vacant area in their town. Why not invest in this town and give it another shot with that area? So let's try to finish that first before we think about anything else. Just my suggestion, Mr. Mayor.
Well, the only thing I'll say is that we've got the open task. We can't spend all our time, energy, and money just in one spot because the clock is not waiting for us. It's going to keep moving with without us. And there are far too many things that need our attention, that need us to address them now. We can't wait. And we're talking about a village governor as all these professionals. We've got something forward. With every single thing that we can possibly do, we need to move forward. And North Main Street is on the list. And things are happening, but we've got to push everything that we possibly can to change Freeport for the best. And I appreciate the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
In favor.
Trustee White.
In favor.
Trustee Piñera.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Mayor Hopper.
In favor.
Requested organization to co-sponsor the Nassau County Department of Social Services Freeport Tourism Service and reading programs. We have Matt Martin, who's the King Union Park, and John J. Randall Park on lead days beginning in July of 2012. So moved.
Second. Hold please.
We have a question from Captain Martinez.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just curious as to what this program is about, what its objective is. I'd like to know what's involved with the village being a co-sponsor with Nassau DSS and how much it will cost. I'd like to know what hours this will be taking place, what activities will be happening, and who supervises the program and determines its effectiveness.
Joe Montalvo, good to see you. First, I'd like to say that this program has, it's not new to Freeport. We've had it at the beginning of my administration. It's an effort to ensure that children that are on earth have the opportunity, one, to have a decent meal during the day, and secondly, to help them with their reading skills. With all that being said, it helps to keep these kids in a positive, clean, safe environment and away from the bad people that might be trying to get them to do things that kids shouldn't be doing. But with that, Joe, he can explain exactly here the superintendent of the program.
For those who don't know me, my name is Joe Paul, former lifeguard of the Village of Freeport. I started this program a couple of years ago. Surely I was a lifeguard in the village in Markland Park. Basically, the goal of the program is to provide management for these vulnerable children who come during the morning, they stay all at home, they don't work home, they don't leave, they're kind of hanging around, to provide some of them, and also to provide some educational enrichment as well. The reading program will be seven days a week. I'm actually, so they're gonna use the Freeport Public Library on how many days a week a week. But the service for the food will be from 12, starting straight from lunch at 12:00 in, till roughly around 3:00 or till the program's out. We're starting with 25 meals per park beginning the first week, which is going to be July 6th, I believe. So, sorry, July 6th. And it'll be basically based on the amount of children that attend. That number will decrease based on the command. When I first started this program, we started 25 lunches. I mean, increased to 45 lunches per day, sorry. That's basically it.
Who's supervising?
Well, I'm basically...
Just to be sure that, you know, it's Freeport, it sounds wonderful, and know that it would be good for any children, not just a child who is in a major reading in a bad place, but any child would benefit from a program like this.
There's no special ordinance, there's no application.
No, I'm just saying, is there any requirement for a program to be effective? Because while I'm saying that I'm in favor of this, and I think it's a good thing, I just want to know if it's supervised in terms of accomplishing an objective, other than, you know, there's a bunch of kids running around and they can't get lunch. So you said that you were negotiating with the library, and that someone will be supervising the reading activities?
Yes. Well, I'm basically supervising it all. Then we have people coming back to read. In terms of success, I guess, in terms of how you would assess this, I think that is...
Or it was a good program and it was successful and wants to begin, or, you know, it's paid but they didn't pay much attention to me and so we're not always doing it. I'm just, like I said, I'm in favor of it.
I guess, I mean, there's no, I have, instead of they, I find that if it makes kids happy, if they keep coming and it builds a positive environment in the parks, to me, that's a success. We're not grading them anyways.
Okay, well, that answers my question.
It's not formal, it's not like a, an equalization of the, the school.
If I could just, if I could just reiterate my question regarding cost to the village?
It's anticipated it's going to cost the village around $5,000 and we have plenty budget for it.
Thank you very much.
He was correct with the six, the polls open on June 26th. He was correct with the program's volumes of ice.
Thank you, guys. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
In favor.
Trustee White.
In favor.
Trustee Piñera.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Mayor Hopper.
In favor.
Requested advertising request for proposed online auction services and leader and other other publications of general circulation on May 21st, 2012, and return date 5/13/12.
So moved. Second. Hold please.
We have a question from Andy Miller.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a question from Maggie Lester.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, trustees and board. My concern about online auction services is that very often these services are used for fundraising. There has to be a written policy here with any auction company used by the village that they're not allowed to have any affiliation, real or implied, with fundraising for political campaigns connected with our village. This would have to include any village officials or any Freeporters potentially running for, excuse me, a political office. A conflict of interest must be avoided at all costs. Would you, I would just like the trustees to make sure that there is proper oversight with online auction services, that it can't be misused, that the basic rules should take into account its limits. Do you have any assurances for me regarding this?
I don't have any objections to that clause into the agreement.
Is it called a good line? I'm just very good at explaining why we do it.
Sure. You ought to remember, years past, the village has sold its surplus vehicles, materials, whatever it might have, through an RFP process and it's, and the amount of money we've gotten back has been very low. Give me an example, we sell a used police car or a dump truck for $215. We go online to eBay or other sites of that nature, where it could be $2,000, $3,000. Now presently, companies that provide online auction service, what they do is they come and take an inventory of the surplus materials, vehicles, whatever you might have, and then they go ahead and they sell it at online auctions, it could be eBay or any other site. Nassau County has used it in the past, they were quite successful, where they, in your period of time, they made roughly $23 to $28 million. North Hempstead's done it, the Wistabay has done it. And we were looking into it a few years back, very recently off the ground. We've spoken to some of the companies that are out there, and they proposed the idea, but again, it's about to an RFP process. Obviously, we will be monitoring it, the issues that you brought up are very good ideas, and we can build that into the language of the RFP. Other than that, obviously, we'll be closely monitored by the office and by public boards.
And I understand that, you know, the basic purpose is for surplus materials and things like that, raising revenue back. But I just wanted to make sure that there'd be some kind of guidelines, that it couldn't be misused if this company is under contract with the village, that it could be, as a design, also used for fundraising, which could imply perhaps a conflict of interest. And as long as something is built into the language to avoid that, I think that that would benefit everybody overall, so that's my concern.
Well, the RFP is very specific, as far as required in the terms of the contract and force bill, any new proposal that we get can include by the determining purchasing agent. And I would assume that this, once the village utilizes this, that would be mine and mine role as standing there.
That's correct.
Absolutely. And I know we had those a number of years ago. We tried and tried, we tried to do something to it.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
In favor.
Trustee White.
In favor.
Trustee Piñera.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Mayor Hopper.
In favor.
Requested revise the vehicle traffic regulation, no spile, section 46, stop was standing at any time unless other lines directly pass. Mary from East North Side from 1.300 feet east of, east of, from Henry Street for a distance of 110 feet.
So moved.
Can I ask you a mind, we have four questions here, from Mr. Richard and from Mr. Paul. Move me to the questions. This initial request came approximately a year and a half to two years ago from the Nassau County Planning Commission. In part of the overall development of that area, the planning commission had some issues with parking. They noticed currently, right now, your vehicles have parked on the curb, and your trucks have parked on the curb from the auto body shops across the street. This was an issue that was brought up, and they have asked us to change the parking regulations, and we are complying with their request.
Have we done our study or is it lying?
This is a Nassau County study.
So basically, they have, they have replied to this, and you're correct.
Well, we have joint jurisdiction on that, with Nassau County's county road jurisdiction as well. This is based upon studies that the Nassau County Planning Commission has done.
And I believe that they agree with their recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Paul.
I'm sorry, I need to call you. Yes, we did our study first, and then they also followed the county study as well in conjunction with studies.
Well, you, well, now, ladies and gentlemen, it's conferred to the need.
I didn't mean...
Both, both studies confer to the need.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, sir. One second. Second. Hold please.
We have a question from Jennifer in Pennsylvania.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I have no issue with this, but I just wanted to recommend something, something I've been noticing on Maryport all along, from basically 7-Eleven by Parkway all the way down to Ocean Avenue, but especially between Henry Street and Ocean Avenue. We should really look at the idea of taking away all parking spaces, or at least most in that area. Parking is an issue, yes, but we have municipal lots in that area that should suffice for most of the patrons of the businesses in that area. Also, those blocks don't have turning signals, and so the left lane's blocked for turners and the right lane's blocked for people turning, park and parallel park and double park, and it's just an issue for everyone traveling through the village as well as the villagers of the city. So I just wanted to make that recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
In favor.
Trustee White.
In favor.
Trustee Piñera.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Mayor Hopper.
How many steps we have to public?
We have 15.
15. 16. Okay. And we are done.
Before we call first, Mayor, please state all of your questions, and then we'll have your two-minute reminder.
Uh, hold on, counsel. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Anthony Miller.
I was still taking down notes when the clerk called me. Well, once again, I won't, I won't take too much time. I actually wanted to go back to the forensic audit for a moment, if I could, Mr. Mayor. Again, how, how many more times are we actually wanting to see this put on the agenda for the board to pretty much say no? This is pretty much a dead issue at this point. Again, I just want to ask you, what exactly are you looking for in this audit? Because I'm quite sure that, maybe the first speaker, I'm quite sure there are going to be about maybe 15 more that come and ask a question about the audit as well.
I've already given you my answer, Mr. Miller. The look of transparency is what happened with the missing buildings. That's simple. And I think that the average taxpayer out there might want to know exactly what happened and how we can prevent such a thing from happening again. For example, for many, many years, a certain company had the ability to rent a piece of property in Freeport for $800 a month when it should have been for a few thousand dollars a month. If you were to add that up for a whatever number of years, let's say 12, 15 years per month, and see the difference, and then you look at what someone's paying in their taxes, and then you take something like that, you add it with the $600,000 bathroom at the rent center, at the ice room, and with some of those outrageous contracts, like the one with the landscape that was making a ton of money per summer. You have all these bad deals. And the way I estimated, when I moved the numbers around, I looked at sometimes, an area about a third of the taxes that people are paying, village tax. village taxes, they would not have to pay if someone had done the right thing. Now, it's obvious that you're saying that, and some of, someone else, that the people here, Mr. Mullins, and the people here, uh, it's like, I don't trust their, their abilities next to that end. What we're saying is that perhaps there are some institutional lies habits here that we need to break, we need to change. But what we do notice is without a real audit, to find out what has been going on here and who, who the culprits are, we're doing the village a great injustice by not performing that audit. And to move forward, uh, you need to know what's going on with the past in order to do better moving forward. People know better, they do better. And so I don't know any other kind of way to say it and that's the last time I'm going to tell you that. You know, you, you are my opposition, I understand. You're going to keep pushing the negative with me because that's what you do. That's okay, but this is about the people's business, not about your feelings about me or me about yours. It's, it's bigger than that. This is the people's business. We're talking about a lot of money, a lot of money. And we've got to get to the bottom. Now, if this board chooses not to support the mayor on this, that's up to the people to decide on if that's what they, they want for the government. Because right now, there are a lot of unanswered questions and the state audit has not given us that. They, they don't go that deep, they don't. And they did not tell us how to correct it. That's not so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, um, again, I've been nothing reportable with you tonight and every occasion that I've come up here and I've told you several times that there's absolutely nothing personal between us. But I'll say this, I am, I am one of people. I'm a voter, I'm a resident. And that's the reason why I ask these questions because for four individual meetings, you can put this on the agenda and it hasn't gone anywhere. And I said, like I've said a few times tonight, those are spaces, that's time we could have been using to move forward instead of staying in the past. Now, you say you need to know what went on. The fact that you just listened to me, the $600,000 bathroom at the recreation center, uh, the vacant properties, all of which was even in the audit report, means that the state controller has pretty much laid out to you what, excuse me, what was done, that's something that wasn't agreed with. So you would take that information, you would move ahead. I said to you before, I asked you why there were, how many meetings there were because I went to one and I didn't see you there. Now, I've heard you say it so many times that it's all about the money. That's almost become a catchphrase. It's all about the money. If it is, I would have expected you to be there to watch the money. No, 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 I'm sorry, I only have 40 seconds.
That's, that's a meeting that I don't attend. I keep telling you that every time you ask me and I told you the same thing. The mayor does not attend that meeting. As for the trustees, they have the opportunity. I've said that over and over and over to you.
The, no, it's, it's your responsibility to attend because I, I wish someone had a copy of the budget with them on the front of it. As I've said before, your name is the largest one inside in the village name as the budget officer. You are supposed to be there for that meeting, Mr. Mayor, you know? And, and specifically for, for someone that I've heard say that you don't trust any of the members on the board and that you're watching the cookie jar. If you didn't trust any of these folks and they craft your budget, I would have been there watching everything they did. I was there because I do trust them. I watched them craft a fantastic budget which you voted for. So i- it's not a personal thing, but I do ask because I want this village to move forward. We're stuck week after week going over forensic audit instead of economic development.
Thank you, sir. Let me make it clear to the public. There are certain meetings that the mayor does not attend when it comes to trustees. I give them the opportunity. Now, when the final budget comes out, there are some things I can weigh in on, other things, they're going to do exactly what they wanted to just as they did with the, uh, channel, uh, 18 and 44. You can have a meeting forever. When they've made up their minds, they're going to do what they want to do. And that's okay with me. But what I'm saying is, is this, at the end of the day, I want everyone to be clear on one thing, the mayor told you about the money. People can move around millions and billions of dollars of their money and not have to worry about anything happening. We gotta remember there's the statute of limitations. Maybe even if there were violations, if you were wrong in a little while, there'd be nothing you can do about it. But even the same folks that came from the old administration and their friends that want to help them and push this under the rug and come up there every single night that this comes up. And they pretend like they're real citizens that care about Freeport and how Freeport's moving forward and they say, you know, uh, how people view us and all this other nonsense. I think there are a lot of people, from what I did, that think a lot of Freeport because we're, we're dealing with it. We're not pushing it under the rug. We're not putting lipstick on it and saying it looks good. We gotta wake up. If we don't protect our taxes after everything we've done, we're insane. We're insane. And I, Mr. White made a comment some months ago about how, uh, that the debt gets paid down naturally. And he's absolutely right about that. But it does hurt when you have a credit card and your minimum payment is 10 bucks and you put in 100 bucks or 200 bucks to pay it down so you, you go beyond the interest and start getting into the principal. For the first time in the history of this village, our debt has come down substantially because we've been working it. I've made sure that the people that work here during the day, every day, have been doing the right thing with our financial people. And that's the reason we've been able to pay down substantial amount of debt. Not because it all comes down naturally, no. If that's the case, then we wouldn't have a hundred and some odd million dollars worth of debt. You gotta work at it. You gotta be sincere about it. But if I wanted to play games, I could play games and let everybody have their way like they've had their way all along and we wouldn't be talking like this. And I would be the nicest mayor around because everybody would be happy because the cookie jar would be accessible and they can have their way. So that, Adam Clark.
Patrick Morrison.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, everybody. I tell you, since our day to Freeport, I said, hey, you've done great. You helped me with foreclosure, you did the roads. Businesses are coming, they take time. I don't, why don't you turn around and get to your business and do this and that? And you're trying to make it better for everybody in the community. Well, when, the things that I heard, that what do you think we're doing? You ask questions. If you can't give an answer, I, if you don't understand, you just move on to another question. When you, when you turn around and tell people that you can't control these, you're not there, people still insist you have to be there, they don't understand. And, and the other man had never done this. They had, they'd never done more than with the foreclosure. Come in, be very good because somebody wants you to step down. I wouldn't step down, very good. Because if everybody stepped down, would things gonna happen? If everybody would sit the way I did one, it's like this is that, so rock the boat. One side says, rock the boat. The other side says, don't tip the boat over. That's, that's why I'm listening in this place. Many ways, you know, listen, that's, that's how it is. It takes time. We all have bills, we have electric bills, we have water bills, but those bills are not the same. Every, every time we get a bill, it's not exactly the same. Just like when you do the road, where it is not going to be the same. Where people don't understand the order and all that stuff. Nobody said, okay, I do it for free and I agree with you. People use energy in the wrong places. They're going to take that energy and backside better. You just come in there and they're watching you. Every move you make, Mayor, that's what they do. What's everyone doing, wanting to bring up, bring up, and that's what exactly they do. It's not a perfect world, all may exist.
Thank you, sir.
Okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jackson.
Hi there, young man.
I would like to, I would like to address there's speeding and aggressive driving down South Lawn Beach.
Speeding and reckless driving down South Lawn Beach? Okay, tell us what, what you know.
Well, lately, lately this year, there have been many accidents down the road and I'm kind of concerned because it's close to my house and it's also close to Archer Street School.
This early in the morning, on the afternoon, all the time?
It just happens randomly. Like maybe, like sometimes it's in the morning, sometimes it's in the afternoon, sometimes it's in the middle of the day. Like there have been, like, a lot of aggressive driving down our road.
Okay, so this is down South Lawn Beach, down, what's that, around Cedar or?
Um, near Archer.
Archer?
Yeah.
South Cedar, South Cedar, okay. Got that, chief?
Yes, we'll pass on to the chief also.
Okay, the chief will go right to work on it. Anything else, young man? Thank you very much.
Mr. Clark.
Somebody lost the mic to the radio.
I had nothing to do with it.
But I do appreciate it, Mayor.
Um, you know, I'd like to discuss this really huge, and I mean huge, Mayor, huge. Uh, when you came into office, we were in the process of having sure rep set up for North Main Street, redevelopment of North Main Street. You got rid of the firm and you hired your board in to work for, I feel, for a lot of internship basis, a bunch of, uh, students working for their degrees. Where were we on the rezoning as a result of that? It's now three years later, almost three years later.
You said rezoning?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know. I have to, I don't know.
Because before we, before we go, uh, you know, buying trees and planting trees and doing everything else, we have to have a full vision for what we plan on doing from Merrick Road north to the village line. And part of that is a rezoning, or it should be part of it. Um, you know, how do we want to see North Main Street developed in the future and redeveloped as we move into the future? And this is huge, Mayor, really huge, that we get this understanding, this clear vision of what direction Freeport as a community is moving with North Main Street. We have a lot of, uh, recent aggravation where businesses have bought residential zones. We hear that constantly. That's the same thing that occurs here. Do we want to limit bars on there, for instance? Do we want to, uh, look at, uh, expanding or reduce use of residential or storefront? Or are the pros and cons of one way or the other? The impact for the future is huge, absolutely huge. We must get a clear vision of where we are going because without that vision, our forefathers, that division, and they established Freeport Power, they established Freeport Water, that was huge because they were able to see the demands in the future. And we need the leadership coming from the center of the days showing us the vision, the future that Freeport is calling to go. And we have not seen that ever since the students made their presentation. You have an allowance to die. Please, time for CPR, Mayor.
What I can tell you is this, Mr. Malone, is that the reason, and, and I, I gotta say that what's happening, the movement that's happening there now is because we're constantly on it. We're constantly pushing the county, we're constantly pushing, uh, uh, every entity that's lit it up to keep it moving. Uh, that's the reason we've had the repossessions on North Main Street that have happened already. Uh, a lot of the folks wanted that happen done before the road was completed. There are a number of places on North Main Street that, yes, they need to be rezoned. I totally agree. Uh, it's moving forward and I will check with zoning and see where it is. And, uh, I'll get back to you. I agree, I agree that North Main Street is huge. Uh, but there's a lot going on. There's a lot going on. You can't just, I haven't been able to concentrate all my energies in just one area. I've been, uh, really multitasking because it's, it's imperative that I do so. There's, there's been so much in need.
But before we are spending dollars, county dollars or village dollars, and fortunately, it's county dollars, redoing the street, we're going to be spending some village money on our tree planters. But we, it doesn't, it's no good without a clear vision through the zoning and comprehensive plan process, which has stalled completely and actually now stalled, stopped and died under this administration.
I think what, what should be made clear too is that the villagers understand that the tree planting grant that came up tonight was just given to us, uh, literally, uh, today. And we're moving on it because we don't want to lose it.
Was given to us today, but yet it was on the internet on Friday.
What I'm telling you is this, and wherever it got on the internet, I'm not aware of that.
Which website?
It was sent to us by the state. Okay, maybe it was Friday. But what I want to tell you is this, it's so that we can have the ability to seek some of the funding, that's all that, that proposal is. So if the state is going to give money, the village will be able to take some money or ask some money because tree planting is important. How far we want to go with tree planting on Main Street is another story. How we want to do tree planting on Main Street is a, is a different story because I'm thinking more of big pots of different style trees and that going in the ground because we know trees give us the J I G because they, they move the cycle. We understand that's a problem, so there's different ways that we want to approach it. And yes, a master plan is, is certainly needed.
All that, all that's going to be developed.
You have your time, sir. Thank you, sir. Uh, who got next? Adam Clark.
Martin Isco.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to give you a portrait of pictures, please.
Okay, uh, computers on wizard. You didn't ask him, Clark?
I was here a month ago asking about the fact that they have wires hanging off of Main Street. And I took pictures of it to show to the board what's going on. And I think you also can take this. They busted my chops because I had a cable going for six feet from the wall to the middle of my porch in the backyard. Well, I got pictures here to show you. You've got wires and poles hanging all over the place and no one does a thing about it. I'd like to know what's going on. You said you're going to check with the league of the law as to who has the right to wire from the telephone poles where whose responsibilities are to maintain it.
Yes.
I wish you would explain it to me. Who has the right and who is supposed to maintain it?
Uh, I want to come up and explain it, please.
I know, I know, wires hanging on, you think that my house has been shot or sliced. Here's pictures here, this is on Merrick Road and we had a little park used to be, this is in the front of our road. I wish you explained this. Well, I'm talking about the wires over here, the hanging roots and the hanging roots and wires, wires, and things, all of them, kind of used once and.
Good evening, residents. Good evening, residents. Uh, picture that he shows here, this is a pole tractor. As you can see, these are electric wires that are already in a transfer.
Yes.
Telephone wires have been transferred.
Well, the poles here, bracketed, the poles are going to fall down. You have to put on braces or hooks to prevent them falling down.
Absolutely, but.
Why don't you replace the poles? Why don't you replace the poles?
Guys, you gotta talk into the mic. People can't, can't deal with this personal conversation.
Sorry. Uh, we did replace the poles, sir. That's the problem. The electric department did replace the pole. Cable vision and telephone did not, uh, do the transfer.
Well, whose responsibility is it? It's been like that for over a year.
That's cable vision and telephones.
Well, whose responsibility is to take care of that?
Cable vision and telephone. We've, we've contacted them, told them that they have the transfer to do. You don't have any other decisions, do you?
Well, shut them down.
Well, tell them who the pole belongs, uh, I think it's asking for it, uh, pole belongs to the telephone.
Well, pole belongs to the village of Freeport. The village of Freeport said that they can maintain it. That was the original concept. Before television came in with the cables stopped, the village said to the electric, uh, to the telephone company, you maintain it. And they don't maintain it. You're supposed to know something about that. Please explain it to me.
Actually, poles are owned by the telephone company. They, they, they own, it's actually theirs.
The village of Freeport said...
I'm incorrect, sir. The tele, Verizon owns the poles. They have, it's their poles under state law. All we can do is notify them that there's a dangerous condition. Uh, we have, we basically have no jurisdiction over those poles at all. They are owned completely by Verizon. State law says we are preemptive from doing anything but notify.
What about a fire hazard?
We can notify that and possibly that's a county fire marshal, the same. Other than that, the rest is up to the state public service commissioner or someone else. Actually, you mean public service commissioner?
Yes.
Public service commissioner.
Well, mind what they came in and said. You can't have the wire hanging down. You have a problem. He says the wall blocks in the main house, main of the house. How, how can they do that and you can't do a thing about it?
Depends on the statutes that are drafted.
What does that mean in English?
It means in English, the state says we can't touch that pole. However, village codes is we can regulate what's happening here on.
But right what we have is residents in the village. You've given me double talk that the telephone pole belongs to the telephone company. Now, who, who controls the electric? Why is it going on a telephone pole?
That would be Freeport Lightning that does it.
And then what, what the fire hazard there, they give me the targets and say, well, you can't have a one-six-foot wire walking from the main house to your house to a porch. And then they have all these pictures here of wires hanging. Look at this over here. That's on Merrick Road and the, the lower park used to be. They have wires hanging all over the place. And that's okay? Not that ridiculous.
Again, sir, that's the telephone company. Your service is electric, which is regulated by us.
No, it's not the telephone company. It's Autobahn. They're in there too. And so is Verizon. Now, who has the wire right? You have the Verizon trucks there, you have the Autobahn trucks there. And then you have Freeport coming with your microphone. So you have three different operations over here. I think, and you, and they must find shots to have a six-foot line going along with my house in the middle of the porch. And you can't do a thing about it? Well, I can. I can move out of this town.
Frank Lees? Can you see?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Tonight I would like to maybe let the people know in this village, this is the ninth year that I've come up here about the same exact problem. And I am just totally fed up of it. Tonight I would like an answer from each one of the board members. I would like them to maybe explain to me how they're going to handle the quality of life in South Freeport. There are a number of things going on now. It seems like this year things have gotten worse again. And you know what? I would like the 155 on office 30 or 19, I don't know what the chairman's gonna tell. Or whatever got changed to, it needs to be revised again. Now, I need to spoke to every single person up there and each one of you in private meeting or whatever. And you know what? I'm sick and tired of living like this. And nothing's being done. I just get pushed under the road and it's not going to happen anymore. Because if I have to, I'm going outside this village if this is not taken care of. And every time I come up here, I get an answer over, oh, this is bad and that's bad. Well, it's not bad. And it's costing the people of this village taxpayer money that every time somebody has to call the police, the police have to go down there. We still have one DB meter in the police department. And I mean, it's, it's just to the point now where the people in South Freeport are just like, they don't even call up anymore, half of them. They're disgusting. Something has to be done. There are sixteen restaurants in that area and eleven of them have music. Now we have sandboxes down there. We have smoke down there. We have traffic down there. We have people waking us up at three o'clock in the morning. This goes on. I'm pissed. I, I got counted this year. I'm doing work for this village since 2006, keeping records. Why should I have to live like that? And I'd like to know from each one of the board members what you're going to do about it.
I will speak to the chief tonight and record what's going on down there. List of how many calls, redundancy of the specifics placed. By ways generated the music and, uh, receiving the violations. And see if we can address the people responsible for it.
What about revising, what about revising the thing that you are in favor for? What about revising that again? Because that thing is not working and you know it's not working. And the rest of this board knows it's not working.
I'll take that with consideration. I'd like to review the chief's report, reports first.
I'm sure he'll give you a nice report, Joe, about how much money is being wasted on the police department.
No.
Well, just a, just a question.
Thank you.
If I can ask a chief a question?
Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. As the, uh, compared to last year, where are we compared to last year?
We've had more complaints this year. We've issued, uh, sixteen village warnings on this down that location. Specifically, six-foot noise, another four violations to village warning statutes. We've conducted twenty-two state liquor authority inspections and investigations. All those are establishments down the block.
Just normal stuff there.
At the same time, I've been in contact with the village department to make sure that these things that are popped up, uh, beach type areas.
They've been contacted, you know, they have been contacted. The village department said what we are as far as the parks. So we have been told, we should be talking to the village department. Right. And I would like to know how you people are going to handle this now. I mean, I can't go another year and come back up here next year holding another calendar that all the times I call the cops. And I'm instructed to do that. And anybody that watches this program should do the same thing. They're instructed to call the police when you're annoyed. Unfortunately, they're the ones getting the, the, the brunt of the situation. We have to waste, we have to waste good time with policemen from, they could be somewhere else coming down to South Freeport, wasting time coming to a house with a meter that they have to go to the station again, go back down there. And you know what? I'm not dealing with it no more. I'm not dealing with it anymore. And it's not fair. If every one of you lived down there, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to live down there. Trust me. It's getting to be a soup. It's getting to be an absolute soup. And I'd like to know very shortly what you're going to do about it. Because like, you know what? We've been through this before. Everybody goes, yes, yes, you're right, no, you're whatever. Well, we go through the same nonsense every summer. Let some of these guys lose their, their license and let's see how fast they'll sharpen up. Because I've had it. I've really had it. And you know what? I've been, I've been trying to cooperate with some of these people. Call up, could you lower your music? That worked last year for a little while, but it doesn't work. And I'm not going to be friends with them because you know what? They have no regard for the people that live in that area. They are not good neighbors, none of them.
Uh, I believe it's more than two years ago. We had a few, ew, Jim, stuck on that word now. We had a, a, a large group of Freeporters from South Freeport in that area that was concerned. And they shared your sentiments exactly. They came with a proposal, but my proposal was not adopted. Uh, you know where I stand on this issue? I am, I can't do it alone. This is something that I agree that has to be revisited by the board because I said that this would work. Uh, this is a tough spot. This whole, uh, situation with Sound, with the notable mile, it's a tough spot. But I do believe that there is a, uh, a medium that we can reach if everyone would just learn to be respectful of it. And without the kind of enforcement, uh, for the police department to operate with, this becomes a moot point because if they don't have the enforcement leverage to, uh, get the kind of results that the neighbors down here look for, it's not going to go away. It's like a few other things around here unless you really address it. It's, if you keep getting the same results and we keep using the same anecdote, nothing's going to change. So I certainly agree and I hope that, uh, we'll...
I, I know you certainly agree. And the thing is, is that, uh, it, it needs to be addressed. It needs to be fixed. And you know what? The answer is lower the decibel or do it without doing music. That's the answer. These people can survive without that.
Thank you, sir. Madam?
Oh. What's left of me is that Freeport survey. I, I telegraphed to a guy on bottom and he says, "Outlaw the boom boxes." Because that's at the heart of the problem. It's, uh, called music, but what is being broadcast along Woodcraft Avenue every weekend evening, it's not music. It's noise. So, uh, either boom boxes go or your residents are going to go. Anyway, uh, I want to finish up. I was interrupted last month in the middle of my speech. I want to do the last stand. I'll probably get cut off again. Can't beat the clock. Um, it was about the fact that some people complained that, uh, Freeport can't afford the charge of a whole, uh, rec center. We've got a better rec center, Rich Rockland Center, Rich Guidance. Why does a poor community like Freeport have such an outstanding rec center? So I was explaining why. It was to stop the, uh, grace riots at the high school. And, uh, I was, uh, sent by Principal McElroy to meet with the, uh, the leaders of the black, uh, congregation there. And, um, so anyway, the two black leaders were sitting at a table at the cafeteria. This is at the acting school waiting for me. My opening remark was, "Let's get these schools reopened fast." Their reply was, "Now you wouldn't be meeting with us tonight if the schools weren't shut down, would you, Mr. Jay?" I replied, "I would rather be home eating dinner." Then I asked, "Why cripple your kids to make your point? My three boys will get an education even if I must go private. Your kids without an education would be worse off than if you amputated one of their legs." In today's world, an uneducated person is more handicapped than a physical cripple.
Thank you, sir.
You must be kidding. How come we only got one of them there? I'm showering, sir.
Thank you. Madam clerk?
Michael Palerico.
Good evening, Mayor. One of trustees. Those don't know, my name is Michael Palerico. I'm a lifelong Freeport resident. I've been a Freeport police officer for the past twenty-three years. And I call and serve for Freeport Board of Education. I deeply dedicate the village of Freeport to volunteering to the executive director of the Freeport Police Office and for the PAL for the past twelve plus years. I've done this in order to help the youth of the village and the various sports programs that were run through the PAL. It's been deeply regret this time. I've decided to step down from my position as executive director of the Freeport PAL. I do this with great sadness, but it's time for me to step down. I do this not by own accord and I'm not resigning under pressure nor am I being forced out. After twelve plus years, it's time for a change. The executive director position is a very time-consuming job and it's a year-round responsibility. While I've enjoyed all that has happened with my guidance, I'm not able to give a position of my full dedication which deserves. I would thank the hundreds of volunteers that have helped me over the past years, whether it's a past or current board member, a director of a sport, a coach or a parent. Without all your support, I could not not end this. I would like to thank all employees of the Freeport Recreation Center. The PAL has a very good working relationship with the recreation center employees and I appreciate all your assistance over the years. I would like to thank the Freeport School District for all their help. The district has purchased our facilities and grounds, assisted us in distributing flyers and been big supporters over the years. I would like to thank all the local businesses that have made donations or given us their products and reduced costs. This has helped tremendously keep the cost down for Freeport PAL. Most of all, I would like to thank the children of the Freeport community. It's been absolute pleasure doing this for the past twelve years. There's nothing more rewarding than seeing a smile on a child's face when he score a goal. The grin on a child's face when they get their first trophy. To see Randall Parker full day with hundreds of kids playing soccer in bright colored uniforms. To see kids play flag football in the rain on a Saturday night and enjoying it, the parents not so much. Have children play soccer and just play their trophy and medals proudly after we go warm house card. To see high school kids come back to the PAL and help our program. And most of all, getting a child to try a sport or often a new experience. These are just some examples that I have been able to witness over the years. While I've had no financial gain from doing this, these images are priceless. I walk away from the PAL with my head held high. I've gained many friends and met many people. I believe that I've helped thousands of children in the Freeport community over the years. I'm proud of the PAL's accomplishments, how the PAL has grown. Through programs increased the enrollment rate of my tenure, I helped the PAL continue to grow. No ideas will be brought forth. And I'd like to thank Shaw in the past night for the village of Freeport.
Thank you. Madam clerk?
Frank Roaster.
Yes, sir.
This actually, this actually addresses a comment. Uh, Mr. Palerico may, at the best, just speaking. Uh, Mr. Palerico was a member of the Freeport School Board. Stated that public comments in the village board meetings should be severely curtailed. He went on to say that the discourse between the board and the public is creating too many problems for the village board. He suggested that the public be allowed to make a statement and/or air statements, but that they not be allowed to question or clarify the school board's responses for lack of responses. His suggestions are not discourse and do not lead to effective communication between the community and the school board. But they are an unjust attempt by a member of the Freeport School Board to mislead and entice members of the village board to, to avoid being held accountable for their actions or inactions by circularly intending of the public comment of courses of meetings by adopting the procedures of the Freeport School Board. The residents of Freeport are going to wake up before it's too late and start replacing, replacing the entire school board. And while we're at it, get with trustees on the village board to help... And while we're at it, get the trustees on the village board to help Mayor Hardwick while he's still willing to fight for the residents of Freeport. If you don't, the only thing you'll be left with is debt. The beneficiaries of the pensions will be long gone with your money and your high bills. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My next question is...
Madam clerk?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Just before I make my comment, I just wanna say one thing, that I've lived in Freeport since 1997. And this is the first time I have ever seen revitalization activity take place on North Main Street. So I'd like to applaud the CBA and the mayor for pushing the envelope with the county to make this happen because it's about time something takes place on North Main Street. My questions tonight are for trustee Panero and trustee Kennedy. Can you please tell me why you refuse to make a motion on issuing an RFP for a forensic audit? What's the harm in doing so? Once the proposals are returned, then at that time we can evaluate the proposals and decide whether or not we want to move forward with an actual audit. Trustee Kennedy, at a previous meeting you said you had no problem with issuing an RFP. And then at the last meeting with the agenda item came up, you along with trustee Panero remained silent. I would think that you would be interested in obtaining a forensic audit, especially in light of your statement that the Glacken administration was right with waste, fraud, and mismanagement. Those were your words. A forensic audit can be used as evidence in a criminal trial and we have already established the fact that there were some illegal actions going on. Not to mention submitting unrealistic budgets, but overestimated revenues and underestimated expenses. So that the general fund balance would look good on paper. And that's so blatantly wrong to the residents of this village. When in reality, our operating expenses exceeded our revenue and then we had to plug the hole by floating bonds. A forensic audit might explain what happened to the $4.92 million that was transferred from an account that didn't exist. I would really like to know how does money magically appear in an account and then disappear? Who is the party that made the general injury recording this transaction? And then how did it get there and how was it subtracted? Where is the backup for that transaction? Who ordered the transfer? I can understand the reasons why trustees Wyatt and Martinez don't want it, but can both of you please explain your reasons as to why you won't pursue it? And also, have you thought about the fact that Moody's could possibly downgrade our bond ratings because we knew something was wrong? The controller's audit report told us so. We did nothing to correct the situation. How do you know that they won't view that as poor oversight and fiscal mismanagement? Can you say with certainty that that's not how they will react? So isn't it better in this case to be proactive and get all our ducks in order? Especially since you, trustee Panero, state that you are a stickler for procedure and following rules and regulations?
Is that all your questions?
Yes, sir.
As I've said in the past, I have thoroughly read the New York State Order, which is professionally done. There was no air written in the report, either suggest or recommend that a forensic audit be performed as a result of this report. New York State did not uncover any fraud or criminal acts in their investigation, which took over a year. Four people going through the entire New York, the entire Village of Freeport documents. New York State orders made suggestions and recommendations in their findings. Did you read the recommendations and the suggestions?
I read the cover, cover.
Okay, so I strongly suggest that the village follow the recommendations of the orders. And if they find something illegal with our in-house orders, bring it to the board and we will definitely prosecute. But I am not favorable to that advertising times, employee times, when I know already what the costs are gonna be. For something that's gonna be in excess of $500,000 on a witch hunt, that the New York State Order to orders have not yet committed to any crime or fraud being committed. And every report that I read in every village since this report came out, they clearly specify on the event that fraud or criminal acts were proven, that they went to the district attorney. Excuse me, sir. If you don't mind. That they went specifically to the district attorney or to the New York State Bureau of Criminal Investigations to follow up on anything they thought was illegal in any of their state investigations, in any of their village reports so far. So that's my answer to your question.
I have no comment at this time.
Oh, okay, alright. Well, I'd like to respond to your remarks, Mr. Kennedy, trustee Kennedy. On page five of the audit report, it said specifically that it was illegally, projects were over budget. Money was bonded for specific items and actions and the money was spent on something else. And it used the word specifically on page five, illegally. So there was a lot going on. So I don't know what it is that you're afraid of in terms of issuing an RFP. Unless you're clairvoyant and you know what it's gonna cost off the top of your head. But there's no harm though foul in issuing the RFP, getting the bids back. And then at that point, then I think we can make a decision based on how much it's gonna cost, what we think we're gonna get. Then you can do a cost benefit analysis. But I think that restitution should be made if we determine that there are, there are some criminal activities taking place. Restitution, and if possible, perhaps maybe jail time. And that's just a small price for what someone would have to pay for what it's cost this village in terms of debt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam clerk?
Jeremy, this is my turn.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, trustees and mayor Hardwick. I have been a Freeport resident my entire life and for three generations, both sides of my family have lived and been heavily involved in our village. I am so disappointed to see such a wonderful community wasted due to a lack of passion. I'm not referring to the passion you all seem to have when you defend your individual actions, but the passion to do your jobs, to do what's best for this village. The drive to make this community a safe and comfortable place to live, shop, and do business. Over the past few years, we have seen bickering, silent treatments, cancellations of traditions such as the Miracle Mile Festival, attacks on community groups such as PAL and the school district. Bad ideas like the Water Works Project and the Waste Energy Plan. Rises in salaries of village administrators, cutting up the police budgets, purchasing of vehicles for personal use, discussions of past practices and past administrations, and the list goes on. We have seen little work to improve our present and work to ensure our future is brighter each day. I think that what is misunderstood by many people in the public light is that you are only appreciated by, you're only appreciated when you do things that are in the best interest of the people you represent. You are only respected when you give respect and you never have power, you have a title. If I've learned anything about politics since my days as the unofficial mayor of Freeport when I was five years old at an divisional school, it would be that a title is only as good as the person who fills it. As soon as you let your ego show, you begin to lose credibility and lose the support of quite a few people. It happens in all areas of life when someone has a position, they can very easily lose sight of what their duties are and who they represent. I beg you all to return to your Freeport roots. Prove the people of the island wrong and make Freeport right again. Make us united and strong. Remove the ideas that we have a north and a south, an east and a west. As long as we stay divided, we'll never move past the point we are at. We have so many opportunities to live up to our once great past when we had a racetrack amusement park of Main Street that competed with the Miracle Mile and private beaches and celebrity neighbors. Having different backgrounds, different experiences, and different beliefs is what makes government thrive. Being able to combine and compromise those ideas is what will make us move forward. We should be listening to each other and working hard with our village tax revenue to truly make us great again. We all have to sit back and realize that there are no sides in this room nor in our community. We all came, come into this room as Freeporters and we will leave as Freeporters. We may not agree on everything, that is life, but let's come together, let's fix our home and make it a place we want to return to. I am sure, like myself, there are many residents of this village with ideas that would make the quality of life in this community the best possible. So let's get the ball rolling and the only thing against us is time. So I think we should just get started and stop bickering and stop this dramatic scene.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Madam clerk, just to recall the next person, just clarifying on the Freeport Miracle Mile Festival, a change in the date of the festival. Will have our executive director, Wyatt, tell the public how this date was changed?
Well, officially it was a collaboration between the police department and the fire department in identifying the fact that we could not comfortably maintain the public safety that the residents are expecting and also we like to deliver. That was really the mainstay of why it was recommended we move the festival from the summertime. I can tell you, as a lifelong resident of the village, I know that the intent of the festival when we first started it was to bring Freeport and put it on the map. It's on the map, clear as day. The, 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 the Miracle Mile is thriving. There are people going down there every single weekend. And we just felt from a public safety standpoint that we were not gonna be able to maintain the standards that we feel we need to deliver. And that was why the recommendation made to the board that we move the festival to the fall to try it then, when it may be, the residents would be able to enjoy it better. It'd be more of a family atmosphere. But also, the businesses between the Chamber of Commerce and some of the businesses there felt that they needed a shot in the arm in the fall, which they didn't necessarily need in June. So those, all those things collectively is what moved us to make that determination and that recommendation to the board.
Thank you. And I might wanna add that that was to lessen the hours, lessen the boom box activity during this festival. It was to be more family-oriented, more about kids enjoying the carnival and competition with the food. Making it something that's more family-oriented and not the drinking and the loudness. It was to be about family. So we're trying to change the culture of it because it's got to be out there. And this was recommended by first responders and by our business owners to change it because they're not happy with the way it's been going on. So it wasn't the mayor's recommendation to change the date of the festival. I've had several meetings with the people and heard the cry that they wanted change. And with that, we established a committee of all the pertinent people that needed to be at the table, from the residents, the business owners, the emergency responders, and village department heads. And we came up with the best date to work with both the public and the business owners and the first responders. So just wanted to clarify that. Madam clerk?
Peggy Bluster?
You gotta go to the village board's person. Please get to the village board's person.
Yes, I just want the mayor to have a word.
You gotta get to the village board's person.
Good evening again. Those papers I'm passing out are copies of budget appropriations that I spoke about at recent meetings. And the mayor said that he, he said that what I, the figures I quoted were not true and he didn't know where I got the figures from. So I didn't want to have any question about where they came from. And what this is, is a comparison of 2009 mayoral expenses under the previous administration and the first two years of this administration. That the mayoral appropriations, actual, you'll see them circled. Under Mayor Glacken, we have $259,798, actual. They're right there. 2010, the second page, mayor Hardwick's administration, actual expenditures, $606,000. It's $606,621,000. Third page, there's the total of the expenses were $624,955. The reason there are two sections on the third page is because the chief of staff was moved out of the mayoral appropriations for that year, but I added it back in so apples could be compared to apples and oranges to oranges. Because that's the way it was in the first two years. So my question once again is, how do you justify to the taxpayers why your expenses, Mr. Mayor, are over 140% higher in less than three years?
Because first of all, ma'am, the chief of staff is no longer in a singular role. Our chief of staff position is shared with the village attorney. He plays both roles with Godwin in that office. So to try and add in the village attorney's salary as the chief of staff is really unfair because he is doing a dual job. And he's not being paid as chief of staff. If you want to be technical, he's operating off the same salary. The difference between Mayor Glacken and I is that I had everyone that worked for me in my budget, whereas he had people that worked for him in other offices and they stayed in those offices' budgets, such as his chief of staff was, am I still in time? His chief of staff was a part of human resources. Whereas my chief of staff was the chief of staff and not both human resources and the chief of staff. And so the salary came out of human resources. Where I showed the salary, that was the difference. But since that time, my budget is down half of what it was. So I, 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 I respect what you're trying to do, but it's just not so. You're misleading the public. Truth of the matter is, is that I've cut salaries down to $520-plus thousand since I sat in this chair. I made far less than Mayor Glacken makes and I must add that there are more than 100 village employees that make more than the mayor here in this village. So where you're going with this, I don't know. But continue, ma'am. And by the way, I want you to know personally from me, ma'am, I will not be your flying monkey. I think that's very disrespectful and offensive. You can call me whatever you wanna call me, but one thing I will tell you, be careful with my children. This village is not that important. Understand me. I wanna make that clear to you, ma'am. I wanna make that clear to you. Be careful in dealing with my 12-year-old daughter. I am not your everyday god. Please be careful.
Are you done?
Okay. Counsel, you can, you can deal with the rest of it at this point.
I, I, you always change the subject when it's a issue you don't wanna deal with.
I'm not. I've explained it.
I have two minutes. See, I never, I never said anything about anybody's children. And you're the one that has two discrimination lawsuits against you. But let's, let's look at, let's look at the two figures here, just on '09 to '10. Personal services for Mayor Glacken was $244,832 and for you, $336,249. And that was just year to year. On the one line, number 510100, it's the same thing. And then your overtime, his overtime was $332, yours was $24,217. So please don't tell me that your salary and expenses are less because it's unpaid if you're in the agency.
What, what time are we at? Are we still in the...
Excuse me, this is my rebuttal time. How about...
No, ma'am, you don't continue with your questions on a rebuttal. That's the need to answer your question.
No, I'm rebutting to what you said. You, you said that what I, that what I said initially was not correct.
Ma'am?
And I'm shutting, I'm telling you... And I'm shut, I'm telling you, you're not telling us the truth.
Let me answer.
You're misleading us.
In fact, I won't answer you, and counsel, can you really tell her exactly?
Because I obviously have been nerfed with you, and I'm telling the truth, because you're talking over me.
Because, ma'am, you're not supposed to be talking right now.
I have two, it's my two minutes.
Now, it's just time that I keep responding to your question.
No, you need to be quiet, because I have two minutes. But you have two minutes.
No, ma'am, you have two minutes to ask the question.
And I, I already did, and the total, ma'am, was $445,000 without the chief of staff on the first year. And it's, it's misleading, and you wouldn't have gone off the track on trying to imply something that wasn't true, that you knew wasn't true, unless you knew what I was saying was fact.
You bet.
Shame on you.
You bet, yeah.
Because you need to be truthful with this, with the public, and stop misappropriating funds of this village, and explain why you have to spend so much money on the previous administration. It's not right. And you do not have a right to... Don't be bringing up things that aren't true.
Whatever you say, ma'am.
Yes, whatever I said. What you say needs to be the truth, and that's what we want, and you're not telling the truth. Shame on you.
Good evening again. I would just like to say that I don't think that anyone who comes up here, week after week, even who care enough to take their time to come down here and address the board, are pretending to be real citizens, and I don't think that our concern about how Freeport is viewed, whether among ourselves or in the media, is nonsense. Mr. Mayor, you said that the big picture is the 40% vacancy rate in the industrial park, and that that is a primary concern. If there's so much to be done, can you please tell me specifically what you are doing to change that? Further to attracting new businesses to Freeport, an RFP was advertised several months ago, the development of Seabreeze Park. There were at least three proposals received in response to that RFP. I read them. I'd like to know what the status is of these proposals, and is there a timeframe in which we could look for public discussion of these or similar proposals?
Is that all the proposals?
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel?
As to Seabreeze, the board awarded a contract to Canada Inn's seaside resort that was awarded a few weeks back. The contract was approved by the board at the last board meeting, and they will be operating, in fact, they're operating as we speak. Initial seven-year contract, seven-year renewal, another seven-year renewal. They'll be operating a restaurant, catering facility, arena, and other events. The village is paid, first a seven-year term of $100,000 per year, second year, the second seven-year term, $150,000, and the third is $175,000. Also, the village gets a percentage of the gross revenue that is brought in, 7% of the first $1 million, and 5% of anything over $1 million.
Thank you.
Counsel, I want to answer all your questions, ma'am.
I'd just like to know what's being done specifically. He can't answer his question, because it's specific to you. I wanted to know, since it's of primary importance, specifically what you are doing to change the situation in the industrial park.
Earlier tonight, we explained that we just had a meeting with a group of professionals that are seriously considering coming to Freeport to help with some revitalization. There have been a number of meetings with people that are interested in doing various things in the industrial park. Just earlier today, I dealt with a film company that wants to utilize some of the buildings down there for movies. There are ongoing things with the county IDA, looking at the perspective of creating our own IDA, because we know that to address those empty buildings is very important to job growth, to fabric of the, of the building, to show that Freeport is moving forward. Even if we were to look at having wholesale dealers come here, whatever, we're looking at all opportunities or possibilities of changing the industrial park. It's been put on the map, because I understand it's not good to have 14 empty buildings. That's the reason I had a team of people go and survey all of our businesses throughout the village, unfortunately. When the cuts came, one of those persons was let go, and one of the contractors was let go, so again, not a bad, not a good decision, a bad decision was made. There are a multitude of things that Freeport can't do to address some of its needs, but you've got to have serious-minded people that are willing to work in those areas, and when you don't have that, you can still move it, and that's what we've got on here right now. But I think the board is starting to take a look at some things, and hopefully they'll do something with it, if it's good for the village, not if it comes before the village is good for the village. But there is action.
I would like to say that I disagree, that you are not surrounded by serious-minded people. Everyone that's sitting up there with you is serious-minded, everyone who's sitting up there is interested in the perception of Freeport, the growth of Freeport, the prosperity of Freeport, and what I think is missing, quite frankly, is vision, as other residents have come up here and said. And until steps are taken for the village to have a unified vision of what it could be, of what it should be, of the possibilities available to it, we're not going to get there. And so I think that that should be the goal for everybody up here. You should decide what the vision is and pursue it, instead of dogging donations. Thank you.
Laura and Taylor?
Yes, sir. Put the seat.
I wish I could say I was...
I missed it.
Yeah, I had no... Now, back again, about the noise on the Nautical Mile. We, I was, a lot of us worked hard for this, we were just trying to get a law passed, you know, we worked a lot, and it's not easy to think to get a law through here, it isn't, and I understand that. I didn't understand then, and I said now. A couple of things really surprised me, one is, it's almost as though there's like two factions, one of them are the board trustees, and then there's some trustees who really have the interests of their residents at heart, and there's others that are just really looking for money, I guess, I don't know, I don't really understand it. But I know that the merchants out there, you know, some of them play a lot of music, and some of them don't. The ones who don't do not go out of business. Rocko's has been doing business for a long time, he was not in bankruptcy until recently, when he started playing music. There is no need for the music to be down there, we're trying to do something about it. We thought we had a law passed, we had a law, we thought we had support for a law, Justin Kennedy changed a little bit at the end, I had a personal meeting with him, he kindly assured me that the changes would be okay. I was not optimistic, I said, I'd like to believe in our resolve personally. It's been a year later, I thought the same thing was not working, I know, read and said something about that, I don't know, so another question, you know, somebody had asked, Chief Rebutis, how many complaints there have been? Well, the fact, the reason the laws were, is because, for example, I can't make complaints. This weekend, Friday night, I had it loud, the noise was loud, I was able, sometimes it takes an hour and a half for a lawsuit to arrive at my house, so I gave a complaint. Saturday night, I come over, and we were going out for dinner, I couldn't complain, they're looking at me like, what kind of a waste of living? We went out for dinner, it was loud, they couldn't complain, we came back at 9:00, I can't complain, I can't complain, you won't see, you won't see that complaints. If you want to find out what's going on, come now. Come now, it's loud, it's illegal, I mean, really, it's, it's... I think, I think the law should be changed, I think we should, I'd like to see another commission, and perhaps in the future, I could take a look, a second look at this law, because it really, it's, it's not working. And I actually, I wanted to make a, Mr. Kennedy, if you're interested in sponsoring another commission with the last...
I would not object, I'm going to have the mayor's authorization. Yes, I'd definitely be involved, be interested in being involved.
Yeah, because part of the problem I have is, is that it's not just, the law as it's written only addresses ample light sounds. When the music stops, we have a lot of drums yelling and screaming out there, that the laws don't address, and they did that to me, I'm a rock in the morning, waiting, they look a lot different. There's a lot of causes that the laws don't address, in fact, we had originally talked about having somebody from buildings involved, and we live in and in their hand, down around weekends, so we wouldn't go to have, actually call a place, and we would've saved some money, I think, on police reports, probably, by doing it. There's a lot of things, I think, that we kind of tore out of the law that we really should think of, and I think that we could do something like that. Personally, I don't think I'm doing this harm down there, if you're a resident, whatever, but I suspect, you know, I think I'm a reasonable person, like I said, I think we could do something with this, but what we're doing now is not right. Then just want to say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Laws changed, and I cannot read the last name of my contacts.
Boy, we're all late tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Um, Mayor, have you been to Waterfront Park?
Yes, I have.
Yes, it's come to my concern that there have been some incidents going on day by day at Waterfront Park, such as drugs, sex, and trespassing. With drugs, when I walk along, I find used needles on the east side of the Waterfront Park, out of the street next door, 9:55 something would be japping. And then when the park is closed, people, people park in a circle and make noise, climb over fences, trespassing, complain at the park. And in the morning, I find used condoms in the circle. People stop in circles, day, night, urinates, male, female, and it's my concern is, what are you doing about it? Because I have done many things about it, I have called the police, there's, it won't stop, it keeps going on and on.
See?
We'll get to that, investigate it, and press the floor.
Thank you, sir. Now, that's, that's important stuff that we should hear, and thank you, thank you for that. Adam Lurk?
The last speaker, Earl Skins.
Yes, ma'am.
Greetings, peace and blessings.
Greetings.
For the last meeting of June before the new leave was, that was not a public speaking meeting, so I'm here tonight to address that issue of June before. I would like for everyone to know that the extended family member who fought in World War I was my great-granduncle, he received a Purple Heart. Every one of my eight uncles have served some type of military service in each branch. My brother just retired from the Navy December of 2011. My brother spent four years in Vietnam and was sprayed with Agent Orange and had to have a liver transplant. My ex-husband served two years in Vietnam, and to this day, he has insomnia and anxiety attacks. So for someone to say that I was disrespectful to anyone who served in the Army, Air Force, Navy, Marine, whatever, who died serving this country so that I could have the right to freedom of speech, for anyone to imply that I have no respect for them, as no respect for themselves, for someone to say that they've come from a communist country, I don't know which part of it, was it under Batista's rule or Cuba's rule, to come here and swear that he would uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, which gives me my right to freedom of speech, and for you to deny that, and you, Mr. Mayor, I know that your ancestors must have lived under Trujillo, and whenever Trujillo did not like the way you looked or smiled, you had a trip to the Cayman Fields, and you never returned, and you come here and along with Mr. Kennedy, I'm sorry, Mr. Martinez, to try to deny my right to freedom of speech? Because at the parade, I saw Mr. Martinez whisper in your ear that I was collecting signatures, and both of you turned around and looked at me, and at that point, Mr...
Thank you, ma'am. Please, folks. Just want to inform the village that just recently, we lost a very dear member of the Freeport Fire Department, Ex-Captain Thomas W. Holden, from Emergency Company Number Nine, past president of the Nassau County Drill Officials, son of the late Ex-Captain James Donald Holden, brother of Ex-Chief Richard Holden, and the, and the late honorary Captain Keith Muggsy, was his nickname that we called Holden, and uncle of Ex-Captain Lincoln Claimant Police Office. To his family, we send out a deep sympathy, and to the residents, we ask you for your prayers for his family, and certainly his company in the Freeport Fire Department, we send out our prayers. And Madam Clerk, you don't have any announcements?
No.
Okay, we give motion to resume. One motion, a petition, two seconds. We have seven, say, hold please.
Senator Martinez?
In favor.
Trustee White?
In favor.
Trustee Panera?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Mayor Bossing?
In favor. Until next time, good night, Freeport. Good night, David.
Chief, thanks for your help, I appreciate it. They went down, and I, I called 911. They're so out of order, it's unbelievable. That's how they get by in this game, since we're the worst. I know, I know, he said, he came by, he said...
All right, I'm gonna talk to him tonight.
How to be a commoner?
What?
How to be a commoner?
I'm good, I improved the quality.
Okay, 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 doing a great job.
So you had a chance to look at my video?
Not yet.